With the administration and representatives from Riley Associates regarding the Meadowbrook Creek project, as all of you know, and some of you in the audience have been affected by the recent storms and have been dealing with this for a number of years, there is a project in the works to correct that problem. So that's what we're going to get an update on tonight. The second part of this caucus after the Meadowbrook Creek project update will be from Herbert Rowland and Grubik Incorporated, which is the company that did the regional stormwater study for the city. So I want to welcome Larry West, who is the business administrator from the city, Joseph Durkin, and Marty Musso from Riley Associates, and Adrian Vakari, and Mark Spatz from HRG. So I will now turn it over to you. We'll start with the Meadowbrook Creek project, Mr. West, and then we'll take questions from council if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. If I can, just for a moment, I'd like to hold the floor for a moment, just to give you an update on the 1700 block of Wyoming. I know there are some residents here in the audience. I just wanted to update council to let you know that last week, the administration did take action. We did issue an emergency declaration for 1709. There is a structure on the premises that has been causing some issues within the creek. After having the fire chief, our city engineer, the mayor had been up there as well, and a few other officials determined that the structure did indeed cause some concern, not only because the creek is laden with debris, but also the wall, the retaining wall that's holding up Ryerson Avenue behind is also has some issues, some leaning issues. So the administration did indeed file for and has filed an emergency declaration to have that removed. So that is in process as we speak. Just, I just want to give you an update on that. And the second thing is, the folks here from 1713 have been experiencing some issues, again with floodwater. Mr. Young is here. I have been to his house several times during rain incidents. The fire department has been called out almost every incident. They've been there timely. They have been working with the residents to make sure that their property is protected as best we can. So I just wanted to let you know that we have been working with the folks in the 1700 block and will continue to do so.
And do we have a timeline yet, Mr. West, on when the garage will come down?
We do not. We are waiting. We have, our city engineer is Lobella Associates. We are waiting for specs to come back from Lobella in terms of the size and the scope of the garage. The moment they get that back, we can put out for emergency bid, an onsite emergency bid to have it removed.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Riley Associates. Joe?
Thank you. I'm Joe Durkin. I'm a principal with Riley Associates. I'm the principal manager for the Meadowbrook project. With me is Marty Musso. Marty lives in the city of Scranton. He's our project manager for the Meadowbrook project. Just by way of background, Riley Associates and both Marty and I worked on the earlier phases of Meadowbrook and also on some of the other flood control projects for DGS within the city of Scranton. Contractually, just so, just to remind council, we, there was a capital project authorized by the legislature. That capital expenditure goes through the Department of General Services. Because it's a flood control project, the using agency is Department of Environmental Protection, and we're actually contracted by DGS. So we work with, we work for DGS. Primarily, we work with the using agency, which is DEP, in terms of putting this project together. This Department of DEP is the one that does all the flood control projects across the entire state for the Commonwealth. So they are the ones that are very familiar with not only what's happened over the decades in Scranton, but in the other municipalities and cities around the Commonwealth. So just, as I said, we've worked previously. We did the design in the earlier lower sections of Meadowbrook, along and in addition, some other projects. So the lower section of Meadowbrook, which was completed in the early to mid 90s, that project extended from Lackawanna River and terminated on Penn Avenue, in one of the backyards there. From there upstream to essentially the area where the, at Electric Street with the Oral School is, that area was not touched under that project. That was originally was always a future phase. So what we're currently working on is that quote unquote "future phase." It's to connect to that existing culvert, which is just upstream of Greenridge Street, and run a project from that location all the way up through the backyards, across the streets, through Sturgis Park, across Electric Avenue, and then have a new entrance structure on the side of the Scranton School for the Deaf. So that's the broad expanse of the project. And I'll let Marty describe what the actual physical construction and the size of those culverts and things are going to be. In terms of schedule, the, all the surveying for the project has been done. All the environmental work has been completed. We've done preliminary design work, and we've completed the right-of-way drawings, and Lobella has finished the individual plats for the right-of-ways that are required for the project. The current schedule going forward is, we are in the process now of completing the construction documents. They're to be completed by the end of December. Permits are going to be turned into DEP for permitting the project in January, and final construction documents will be prepared after the permitting process goes through a few months' worth of review, but they'll be done in the spring, probably around March of 2022. That will not be probably the limiting factor on when the project goes to construction. From the state's perspective, there are basically, that's what's under the state's control, which is the permitting and the construction documents. In these kinds of projects, these flood control projects, what is always the controlling factor in terms of the schedule is the right-of-way acquisitions. And by the right-of-way acquisitions, we mean that there has to be a permanent easement and temporary easements required for the construction of the project. The city of Scranton is what's known in DEP parlance as the sponsor of the project. So you've signed, council has passed, a sponsorship agreement with the Commonwealth. And that sponsorship agreement spells out a number of responsibilities, but in terms of getting the project to construction, there are two major responsibilities. The first one we just talked about, that's right-of-way acquisition. So the actual acquiring of the right-of-ways for the project is the city's responsibility. And that process involves taking these plats that have been prepared by DEP and getting appraisers out, getting the lawyers out, putting together easement documents, meeting, making offers to the property owners, and acquiring those lands that are required for the project. It is our estimate that that process will probably take about a year. And again, that's just based on prior experience. If you can go a lot faster with that, that's great, because that acquiring of those easements for the entire project will be the limiting factor. Yes?
I have one question on that, just so I don't forget. Do you know how many, approximately how many properties or homeowners would be affected? In other words, it's my understanding that, as you just said, the city will have to go out and attempt to acquire those properties. Do you know how many of those properties would have to be acquired for this project?
Excluding the city street right-of-ways, there are 47. And they're mostly residential. There are probably a couple of commercial properties sprinkled in there. I mean, the Scranton School for the Deaf is either commercial or institutional. I don't know exactly how that deed stands right now. There's the Greenridge Club. That'd be, again, commercial slash institutional. So there are a few different flavors in there. Primarily, most of the easements are residential in nature. The city did a similar process when we did the other projects. Back then, John Blake actually led the effort and coordinated it. So I think that one of the things that we see for this effort is having a very strong, capable administrator, administrative staff running that process is critical, because you are talking about 47 easements, property owners. Sometimes there's, very often, multiple owners of a single property. We're going to have some properties that are going to be, you know, in an estate. There's going to be some that are committing corporations. You're going to take, it's going to be a lot of time contacting those property owners, getting appraisers out there. Generally, you need at least one or two appraisals for a property. I mean, the last time we did this, we sometimes had a third property, a third appraisal. Sometimes there's an iterative process there, going out, visiting the property owner. They have a professional involved. There's some iteration to coming up with a final appraisal. The lawyers will be involved in terms of preparing those documents, the actual easement documents that have to be executed. Again, there may be some negotiation back and forth between the property owner's lawyers and the lawyers representing the city. Forty-seven easements, you may run into some situations where you have to do a condemnation against a property. I mean, it may be that you either got a property owner who just won't cooperate, or you have a situation where a property is in some kind of legal status that you don't really have anybody, you can't find somebody to respond to you to sign for that easement. So you have to take those steps. So it, there are a lot of pieces to that, and it really is going to take a substantial effort to, you know, get those professional staff lined up, and then have somebody to administer and get step through that process. And that's why, and this is not the city of Scranton. This is typical of all these kinds of flood control projects across the Commonwealth. This is the step that will be the final step before you wind up going to construction. So my understanding on those easements, those plats, is there were at least a preliminary copy provided to the city in July, and my understanding is they are going through final review by DEP lawyers and DGS lawyers over these last couple of weeks. So I would expect those to be out to you in their final form within the next couple of weeks. I would encourage on that, and again, I don't know exactly how the administration of this works internally to the city, but whatever that procurement process is for those appraisers and those lawyers and to set up that administrative staff, that's something you really need to do now, because once those properties are, have reached a point where they're given a final approval, you'd be in a position to start having them appraised and sending out offer letters and start having those conversations. The other major item that's a requirement to get to construction has to do with what are called sponsor adjustments. And that's a, it's a DEP term, and essentially what it refers to is there are a number of obligations under the sponsor agreement that fall back onto the city of Scranton. So for example, relocating utilities. The cost of relocating a utility is a sponsor adjustment cost, meaning it's the city's responsibility. So relocating a water line, a gas line, a sanitary sewer line, storm lines, paving the roadways. We have a couple of places where the culvert will cross over a roadway. So the cost for rebuilding that roadway, the curbing, the sidewalks, that's a sponsor adjustment. DEP and their project and DGS will, their baseline is to restore to a grassed condition. So if you go through a backyard with a project and you disturb a patio, for example, the cost to put that patio back falls on the city of Scranton. So what we, and there's, again, there's landscaping, there's small walls. These kinds of things are all, all become city costs. So, and we've enumerated those. We've already identified all those, and we've provided them to the administration. What we've, what is very often done, what we did in the earlier phases of the projects with the city, is the city entered into a separate agreement with the Commonwealth. Other than your sponsorship agreement, this has to do with the sponsor adjustments. And what you do is you sign an agreement that basically asks DGS to put all of this work in the construction project. So you don't have one contract, you don't have the DGS contractor digging up the road, and then you're trying to come in with a separate contractor to backfill that and pave it and put in the sidewalks and wind up with finger pointing if there's a settlement, you know, was it the paving work, was it the original construction work? So during the first phase, we found that worked out very well, because you had one contractor who was responsible for taking down a fence and putting the fence back up. If there's an above-ground pool for taking that pool out and putting it back, sprinkler systems, that sort of thing. So all those become part of one construction project. Those costs are separately identified, so that you get an accounting of all of those costs, and then that expense under this agreement is something that the city would pay for. So those two items are typically, like making that arrangement to have those sponsorship adjustment, construction-type costs folded back into the project, and the arrangements for acquiring the right-of-ways. Those are the two things that are a primary responsibility for the city to get this project into construction. Based on the timeline we just talked about, we're in essentially late September. You add 12 months to that. You're going to be into October, say, of 2022. Final clearance of the project, advertisement. You're probably looking at construction beginning in the spring of 2023.
Just real quickly, real quickly on that.
Yes, sure.
Do we have a timeline for how long construction would take then? So if we were to start construction in?
Yeah, we estimate a two-year construction season for that. So, yeah, two full years.
So with that, with that, we're talking spring. It's going to start spring of '23. Should be completed by spring of '25?
Correct.
And that's a, that's full final completion. So there's time built in there for doing all the restoration, the grass growing, all the rest of that. So the actual culvert construction, those made portions, will be finished ahead of that time. Typical construction is you start at the low end where you've got a good tie-in point, and you would build upstream from that location. If there are no more questions, I mean, I'll be here. I'd be happy to answer more questions, but I was going to turn it over to Marty and let him just describe the type, exactly what it is that we're talking about building.
Yeah, as far as the actual construction, as Joe said, we're starting at the upstream end of where we left off in the earlier phase, which is just upstream of Greenridge Street. And what we built there was a 10-foot wide by seven-foot-high box culvert. And we're going to tie into that box with a seven-foot wide by seven-foot-high box culvert, which will extend upstream underneath Penn Avenue and into the backyards and into the location near where the rear of the Greenridge Club, where it's actually open channel. And that stretch there is about 430 feet. So behind the Greenridge Club, we will replace the open channel with a concrete U-channel. It'll be seven-foot wide by seven-foot, feet minimum depth, and that's approximately 150 feet long. And then from there, it'll extend upstream in a seven-foot diameter concrete pipe, which will extend the full length of the project up to upstream of Electric Avenue. And it'll cross all the streets of Delaware, Wyoming, Washington, and it'll go back into the open channel where it currently exists. And at that upstream, and that's a total of about 1700 or 1800 feet from that Greenridge Club section. And at the entrance there, we are also proposing a debris, a trash rack, which will prevent, like, large trees and debris from clogging up the channel at the upstream entrance. And that's near the Scranton School for Deaf, as Joe mentioned. And that's basically the total length. The total length is approximately 2,400 feet.
Thank you. In terms of, so obviously, based on what you said, Mr. Durkin, there is a lot of work to be done here to get this project through completion. So to turn now to the city's portion of this, Mr. West, are we, is the law department equipped to handle something of this magnitude, or will we have to farm some, obviously, we're going to have to farm some of this out. So can you just take us through that process and where the city is in terms of the legal part of this whole thing?
Yeah, so that's, now, to answer your question, our law department standalone won't be able to handle the amount of work here. So this, we would have to put out for an RFQ for some services, not only for legal services, but also for the appraisal services as well. So I would expect to see that in the next couple of months. We'll get the RFQ out and make sure that we're teed up for, you know, the first part of first quarter next year.
In terms of the, can you walk us through the funding? I know that, I think this project total, correct me if I'm wrong, it was approximately $9 million, somewhere in that range. And from what I, we were told last time, approximately $7 million would have been for the actual construction of the culvert. And then $2 million would fall on the city in terms of all the things that Mr. Durkin had talked about. So can you walk us through how the city plans on funding that, our portion of the project?
Yeah, so this is, as you know, this process, project predates my time here. But the update I have is that there are some dollars that the city has set aside over the last couple of years from different asset sales and whatnot. They put some money into special cities. So there's a combination of some subsidy grant money that's come in. I believe we made another ask this round for some Act 13 money to help offset some of the, again, local cost share of the burden that the city has to take. And then we have the remainder in a special cities account that was set aside from the sale of the asset of the stormwater, of the sewer system. Now, again, the final number, that $2 million is an estimate. So we'll see as we get closer, really, what our notice is and what we have to come up with. But for the most part, that's where, that's where it's coming from.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone on council have questions?
I do. So I understand, I totally understand the process, but it's not going to start until 2023. So early, you identified that there's going to be a garage taken down in the 1700 block of Wyoming as an emergency declaration. My, I have one question. First of all, why hasn't it been taken down, say, even three years ago? But that's, it's coming down, which is great. So you talked about some monies. We talked about who's responsible for what. So after this garage is taken down, who's responsible for the surrounding properties that have been affected already by this? I'm saying, some of the cosmetic stuff you mentioned, like landscaping costs, obviously, it's the city. Is that going to be taken care of? Because you did say there's some money set aside.
So in terms of the garage, it's 1709. There was, there's a condemnation notice on the garage. The emergency declaration allows us, the city, to take the garage out and clean out the creek bed. Again, as I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, that there is a retaining wall. It's about eight or 10 feet high that's holding up Ryerson Avenue. That wall is leaning. From about 1713, I guess it would be down towards 1709, where the wall terminates. There is, there is an issue with the wall. I think a lot of it, well, what we're talking about here today, and I know it's been several years, Mr. Young and I became acquainted back in January 2011. So to let you know how long I've been talking about Meadowbrook Creek, it is now coming to the point where we need to take some action. It wasn't just because of the debris, which in itself is bad enough. The part of the creek that, I believe Riley Associates designed that, the part of 1713 and 15, the temporary fix that we have in that section of Wyoming Avenue, that part that was, that had collapsed a couple of years ago, I know this council was dealing with it. We had found some state dollars to help, at least in the short term, remediate the problem that was in the back of Mr. Young's yard. This is now downstream. That's creating another problem. So we fixed the one issue, and then two doors down, we now have another issue where the garage is the issue. Once we clear the garage out, we're going to have to find a way to secure that space. I don't know if it's through fencing. That'll be determined by the attorneys and by the folks who reside there. But the wall's going to need some attention as well. I'm not sure what, we'll have to bring our engineers back out to take a look to see how we could stabilize that wall. From what it looks, the water from where the garage had fallen, the floor had fallen into the creek bed, when the water does flow, it seems it is scouring out below that wall that's holding up Ryerson Avenue, which is causing it to lean. So I'm not sure what remediation could be done for that. But that should, that too is going out with the emergency request for demolition is, the right to follow, right following that would be to stabilize that wall. And then how we secure the property, I'm not quite sure with that yet. Again, we'll talk to our attorneys about putting up some type of fencing or some type of security so that it's not just a five-foot open creek that we will be responsible for.
So you anticipate these problems will be alleviated, because it's going to be two more years till the rest of the Meadowbrook starts?
Well, I can't speak for what happens downstream from here. All I could say is that there's a problem that's, that poses a threat right now. And I believe this emergency declaration, removing the garage and the debris, will at least alleviate us from this liability at this point. I don't know what happens when you get downstream, because it actually goes from 1709 Wyoming, it actually, the creek actually goes back underground into the concrete culvert. So I don't know what happens, and I think it comes back out down behind the Greenridge Club. But it's underground for the better part of a block or so. So I'm not really sure what that looks like. I'm not, I'm not familiar. But for right now, the issue that we have at hand is that the creek bed is, has the trash, and we should get that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Maybe I just, if I could just have a moment to follow up. We, as part of the investigations for DGS, we did map out the existing culvert, and we did go into different sections of that culvert. And downstream, basically, before you get to the Greenridge Club, but downstream of Wyoming Avenue, there are sections of that existing culvert which are partially collapsed. Now, again, it's been, I don't know, 18 months or two years since we've been in there. We would expect that that deterioration of that culvert has continued. So there's, there are other things in that culvert downstream of Wyoming Avenue that are going to continue to impede water from flowing through there. I mean, that's the reason you're doing the whole project, is because that culvert is deteriorated. I'm sorry, yes?
So, Mr. Durkin, would you say that the piece, I don't know, Mr. Young's property, is that 1713? Is that that address? Just so I'm using the correct addresses. We're talking 1713 to 1709? That section there, would you say that is the major problem section in this, in Meadowbrook at this point in time? I understand there may be other pieces, but is this the piece that every time it rains, we have an issue?
I would say that that area is the one that is the one that is experiencing the most amount of damage from what occurs when there's a rainfall. In terms of what's the worst part of the structure?
Damage to rainfall was what I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah, there's no doubt. We're not aware of any other, any other properties along that that have experienced anywhere near the kinds of repeated flooding problems that have occurred there.
So now, with that said, if, when the garage is removed, so the plan is to remove the garage to clear that creek bed, and I don't know how far that goes. I don't know, 40 yards, 40 feet, something like that in that area. When that garage is down and that creek bed is cleared, do we think we will alleviate the problems that occur from Mr. Young's house to the drain that goes up maybe three to four properties?
I mean, I think, I'm unfamiliar with what, you know, what exactly had occurred at the garage, but certainly if that garage collapsed, it would have prevented the water from getting past that property. It's going to make it better. But I mean, at each successive point in the line, you know, if that, if that collapse is cleared, and now there's another collapse, another 100 feet downstream, you're going to continue to have, you know, those kinds of problems. Whether they're as bad, I mean, if the collapse immediately next to the house, if this garage essentially collapses and leaves only 10% of the waterway open to convey water, that's, it's going to be much better if you clear that out and now you've got a culvert that's conveying, you know, 60 or 70 or 80% of its area. So yes, I would expect it to get better.
So at this point in time, Riley Associates did put in the, there's a drain, I'd say two properties up from Mr. Young. There's a drain there that comes down to that concrete reservoir with the sewer lid on it. That piece right there is functioning properly and is clear, correct?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yes, but you, as in all of this, you know, the, the problem is that entire culvert system is, is undersized from the kinds of storms that it's trying to carry. And as it deteriorates, that even goes down further. So I think we estimated that the culvert, we, what we did is we essentially replaced it in the same size culvert that, I mean, bigger than what was there, obviously. I think there was a three-foot pipe there, and what we put in a five-foot pipe. So we made it as big as we could, given the circumstances. But overall, that whole system is, is only conveying, I think, less than the 10-year storm, isn't it? So, so the pipe that we're putting in is designed to convey the 100-year storm. And the pipe that's, that the system that's in there now, if it were all working 100% and there was no debris and no collapse or anything, you're not, you're gonna be conveying less than the 10-year storm.
The 100-year storm would be the seven-foot pipe?
Correct.
Okay, right now, there's a three footer?
And the, and the open channel, and the, the seven-by-seven box.
Yeah, so right, right now, there's a three-foot pipe in that section, or it's a five foot?
I believe it's a five foot.
I think what we put in was a five foot, I think what had been there is three foot. But I think downstream of us, underneath the.
Right, I, I think the issue with trying to just do a section of the stream was the profile of the, of the creek, creek invert. So we put in basically as big of a pipe that we could in that, that little section behind Mr. Young's property without being able to continue downstream with the construction.
The profile of creek bed would have been about six feet originally from the original construction.
Right, so we have, we have, you know, we were, we're gonna be lowering that in this full design, because we're gonna be able to go right through the whole project area and lower the creek invert all the way down to where we're tying in at the Phase One area.
Yeah, now, when this, when the construction starts, is that section going to be replaced, or is that section going to remain there?
That, that's gonna be replaced, yeah.
Okay, so that will all be replaced?
Yes.
So with, with, again, back to the garage, when the garage comes down and the creek bed is clear, we should see all of the, the issues that are happening in that section resolved? To the best of your knowledge?
Well, I, I think it's gonna get better, like, but it's not gonna convey the 100-year storm still, as we, as we said, you know? And I think there's some, some issues with the culvert that, as Joe mentioned, downstream of the section that was replaced, that were there.
Yeah, further down. Now, how far does that go to, how far from, from the garage now, to the original Phase One that was completed in the 90s? About how many feet is that from there to there?
Uh, that's probably 600 feet.
600 feet?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's collapsed that full length.
Say that one more time.
I think the collapse is, is less than that.
Okay.
I think, I think it's, the, the portion of the culvert that was worse when we were in it, extended from that garage area down towards Delaware Avenue, like, probably 100 feet or so.
Okay. Now, back to the garage, Mr. West, you said you're gonna, it's gonna be put out to bid. Is there any reason why the, our own DPW couldn't do the, the demolition on our own?
So, two things. One, our DPW crews have been short-staffed, and I think it's been no secret, we've been short-staffed. So we, we did have issues trying to get the right crews in to take care of it. And the second thing was, last week, when that notice was given for the emergency declaration, we actually had a second structure in Southside that had a second floor that had collapsed. And at the time, I believe our declaration was signed on Wednesday for 1700, the, the one on Orchard Street in Southside, we were gonna sign that on Friday. And then over the weekend, the residents decided they were gonna take care of the, of the issue themselves. So that brings us back to just doing 1700 by itself. We still don't have the time for the crews, we checked with Tom Preambo, DPW director. So we were just gonna, we were just gonna bid it out, an emergency, and then we had to, we were looking for the dimensions, we were waiting on La Bella. Again, not trying to make excuses for anybody, but apparently the engineer was out sick for a couple of days and couldn't make it in. So we're, I think tomorrow, we'll have the, the dimensions on the structure, and we'll get that emergency deck, we'll get it taken care of, with the garage, by early next week.
Okay, so that, that would be the estimate we'd probably get, the dimensions probably by tomorrow?
Yeah, he, he has to give dimensions on the size and the amount of debris that has to come out of there to give, so that we could put that out. So the emergency declaration allows us to have an onsite bidding process, so we'll notify, you know, a handful of the typical companies that do that kind of work in the city, and we'll have them onsite, and then we'll make determination there, and we'll, we'll issue out the contract at that point.
Okay, so the, the day that you guys are out at site, you should be able to get the bid that day and start a meeting?
Yes, sir. We should be able to get the contract, I'm not sure they could bring the machine out that day, but we should be able to get the, the contract on that day.
Okay.
And obviously, they know this is an emergency, so we're, you know, we're looking to do it, you know, sooner or later.
Okay, so that would be, that would be about mid-next week that that should be done, and then?
That's my expectation, yes. I fully expect it to be that way.
What day do you think we could have crews on, on the ground?
Uh, that I don't know. OECD is actually taking on the process of, of getting the, Ellen Cipriani is in the process of getting the, that portion of it out. So, I mean, I could check with her tomorrow to get a more definitive answer. I, I did check with her before the meeting tonight, she just let me know that they were still waiting on La Bella to come out to give the, the specs on, on the garage itself. So I could check with her tomorrow if you'd like, and get back to you as a, you know, a better timeline as to when that could happen.
All right, and then, once we have a crew on the ground, do we know how, what's the estimated time it'll take to take that down and clear the bed?
Um, I, I don't know that, and the engineers didn't spec, they didn't tell me, I didn't wanna speculate, but I, I can't imagine it would take much. And in fairness to the folks here from Riley, they were not part of that, that emergency declaration piece, I'm not sure you even remember seeing the garage up there. But if I can, just for a moment, I think that, to answer your question, I, I'm not sure what happens downstream, but at the very least, the issue that's at, in front of us at 1709, by removing it, at least removes that obstacle from the, from the creek bed. So I'm not saying it's gonna save everything there, but it certainly will, will allow some of the water to flow much easier.
Yeah, and I think downstream, we're talking another, you said about 600 feet, is that what's?
Yeah, that's the bottom line.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay.
If, if I can, just, I just wanna say thank you to, to Mr. Durkin and Mr. Musaf for coming out tonight. They have been, they have been very good and getting, and responsive and getting back with some of the questions. I know it's never an easy thing, they have, they have worked no different than we do, but when, when council asked, I reached out to, to Tom and Joe, and they were, they were kind enough, so I appreciate you coming in on a relative short notice, I know we have tight schedules, but thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you very much. As you had stated tonight, this is a very complex project with a lot of different moving parts. And although it may not look like there's anything going on, because there's not actual physical construction until, as you said, a year or two from now, there are a lot of things going on behind the scenes to make sure that this project gets done and that we can get the ball across the goal line. So, again, thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay?
I'll just make a real brief remarks on the stormwater plan. Back in late June, HRG had come up from Harrisburg to do a preliminary presentation before the final here on the regional stormwater, which the city had hired. In front of each of you, there is a copy of the final plan. Just, just so that the folks in the audience know, we will, I was asked at the last meeting if we could put the final version out for public review at, at the library, so I could assure you, one of these copies will be at the public library for review, I'll bring it up tomorrow. But HRG, again, they've been no different than the folks at Riley Associates have been, have been great to work with, so I appreciate both Mark and Adrian coming up here tonight, and I'll turn it over to them for their presentation.
Thanks, Larry. Yeah, Mark and I are very excited to be with you this evening and to be able to present the final version of the regional stormwater study for, for Lackawanna. You'll find that what's included in the final study, those same benefits and findings that were in the draft study, are included in the final study that, what, that we provided to you tonight as well. So some of those benefits include our findings that its estimated residential property owners would save about 80% by paying for stormwater through a fee, as opposed to continuing to pay for stormwater through taxes. At, in looking at the county-level stormwater authority, we looked at it for the 22 MS4 regulated municipalities in, in the county, and looking at the, the programming, how that would be provided, we've determined that the city of Scranton is projected to save about 24% through a regional program, and that would amount to about $6.8 million over the next 20 years. And similarly, we looked at some of the other regulated municipalities within Lackawanna County, and we projected that they would likely save somewhere between 43% and 64% through a regional stormwater program. And then also through, you know, a fee-funded program, you know, currently, stormwater and levy costs are typically paid for out of, you know, your general fund and the general fund of, of the other municipalities. By doing a county or some type of regional program, those costs would be able to be carved out of the general fund budgets and, and put into the, the budgets of this, this joint program. So what that would do is it would create positive cash flow for the city of Scranton's general fund and for the general fund of the other municipalities, and then that money could then be put towards other needs that are currently going on in the municipality. So, in summary, we've determined that this type of program would be both feasible and beneficial to, to the Lackawanna region. Now, if there happens to be any issues in moving forward with a county-level stormwater authority, there could also be a way of providing similar benefits and cost effectiveness if a smaller joint authority were to be formed by the city of Scranton and surrounding municipalities. And city staff has also, has already received some preliminary feedback from surrounding municipalities that that type of joint program through a smaller approach would be something that they're interested in. The next steps would be to meet with the municipalities to discuss the regional approach, and then also meet with DEP to start discussing a joint MS4 permit. And I think that meeting with DEP could be really key. It's our understanding that DEP's in the process of going out and doing reviews of MS4 programs in various municipalities throughout Lackawanna County. And it's our understanding that they're finding notices of violation, and that those notices of violation are gonna be conveyed to some of the municipalities over the upcoming months. Now, the municipalities surrounding the city of Scranton, they for the most part have general MS4 permits. And what that means is they're required to implement green infrastructure projects by 2023 as part of their current permit, and a lot of those municipalities are currently behind in meeting that deadline. Now, the city of Scranton has an individual permit, and your timeline for constructing your green infrastructure projects has not yet been established by DEP, but it's projected to be around 2027 is when you need to have them constructed by. So if you're able to come together under a joint permit with these surrounding municipalities on your timeline, effectively, you'd be giving those municipalities an additional four years to, to comply. In addition to that, we could look at regional BMP projects. So currently, each of the municipalities need to construct BMPs within their municipal boundaries. But if we were to do this through the regional program, we could look to cite BMPs that don't just meet the current MS4 requirement, which is how they're being done now, we could actually cite them to help address some of the flooding issues that are going on as well. So it gives you the opportunity to basically comply with DEP regulation at a reduced cost, but then also help solve some of the flooding issues by citing BMPs in more strategic locations. And then also, again, by doing it regionally, those BMP or green infrastructure projects will be done more cost-effectively. So, you know, with the significant storms that we've seen in recent months, it's been evident that benefits can be received from more effective stormwater controls. And based upon our work, HRG is confident that this would be realized through a regional stormwater program, like we've outlined in our study. So with that, are there any questions that, that you have about the regional stormwater concept or the next steps for moving forward?
I guess my question would be for Mr. West. So Larry, what do you see moving forward in terms of trying to work with, I mean, I think we know what the goal would be in, in the best way, based in, in your report, would be to partner with the county, or to partner with, whatever that looks like. So, you know, does the administration and the mayor have any idea of what that looks like moving forward now that we have the, the final plan?
So, as you know, this is not, when, when I came to the city in June, it's not my first discussion about a regional stormwater authority. When I worked for Senator Blake over the last, I don't know, three, four years, it's been something that I've been pursuing, it was on his behalf, and when I came here, it's obviously, I'm still picking, picking that ball up. So the, you know, based on, on HRG's assessment, you know, a county-wide stormwater authority makes the most sense. Adrian mentioned where the city may only be benefiting 24%, as opposed to some other municipalities may benefit, you know, 40 or 50%. That's only based on a percentage, it's not based on dollars per se. Obviously, we have, we have, we have a lot of streets in Scranton, so that 24% in terms of dollars would, would certainly be beneficial for the city, you know, long-term as we move forward. The key here would be to convince the, the county that this approach is the right approach, not only for the folks and residents of Scranton, but the other remaining 21 permitted municipalities. A year ago, when, when we had, I made an appeal, there was some questions, of course, at the county level. I did make another appeal recently, and I think, you know, I think it's public that the city and the county, we have had some discussions regarding tax claim issues and other things that have been going on between the city and the county. So the flood, the flood control or the stormwater issue was not necessarily on top of their priority list, you know, and I don't mean that in a negative way, I'm just saying, we've had other issues we had to discuss. So I think our next step is, is to bring this plan to the county commissioners, to make that pitch, to say, listen, we, you know, the city has taken the initiative, they've paid for this plan, it's determined that the, the county approach is the best way moving forward. I think it's evident tonight, I mean, we're talking about a flood control, I don't want to conflate the two, but the fact that we're talking about stormwater issues, I think you all, as elected officials, hear it every time it rains, there are neighborhoods in the city that have, have issues. Some of them, you know, can be rectified with a stormwater plan, others, there's just infrastructure issues that we need to, we need to upgrade. But I do think that our next step is to bring this plan before the county, let them know that, you know, that, that the city of Scranton is serious about the stormwater, and that they should take a close look at this, and that we're willing to partner. The mayor's made it clear that stormwater is, is an issue that she wants to take on. I know there are several councilmen up here that have also reached out to me to talk about stormwater and issues in neighborhoods. So I think the plan is, is comprehensive, I think that the, I think that the county, you know, for, for whatever, whatever issues they may have, should take a close look at this plan, and, and we'd be willing to, you know, and I know HRG has already offered to come up and, and put the presentation out for the county commissioners as well. So our next step, I think, is to reach out to them and see if we can, can get them on board. And if I could talk a little bit about the joint municipal that Adrian had, had alluded to here, there, there have been a couple of contiguous communities that have reached out. It's been in the paper a couple of times over the last couple of months about some of the stormwater issues, and we reported on this in July or the end of June, whenever it was that they were here last. There are some municipalities that have, that have interest in, in working with us. So I, I think those municipalities, coupled with Scranton, the fact that the city was, was proactive and had the plan put in place, I do think it, it, it's a good story to go to the county commissioners with, to say, listen, we're, we're serious about this.
Thank you. Now, there's a negative connotation out there with stormwater management planning, and it's the rain tax. And when people hear the rain tax, you know, everybody goes nuts. So can you speak to the, to what would happen if the city did nothing? Let's say we thumbed our nose at this plan that you have put a lot of time into, and we, we said, you know, we're not gonna do it, we're not gonna worry about it, we wanna, you know, stay away from the rain tax. Can you talk about that and debunk that misconception, and I think some misinformation that's out there, maybe?
Well, I would say if you continue to handle stormwater the way that, that you're currently handling stormwater, you're going to be incurring some additional cost associated with your MS4 permit. So once that gets approved by, by DEP, likely over the upcoming months, then the city would need to move forward with financing the BMP, you know, implementation cost. And what DEP has explained to us is that these MS4 requirements aren't likely to go away, you know, and anytime soon, you'll be required to continue to implement these types of projects in future permit rounds, which are every five years, until any, you know, pollutants in the local bodies of water are removed. And, and overall, the county has completed a countywide action plan currently that, that also looks at water quality in more rural areas. And so there's also the intent for these MS4 permits to start aligning with what the county's been, been working on. And that would be, that would be done through DEP under future permits. And that would be, that would be done through DEP under future permit cycle. So these costs are going to continue to grow. At the same time, infrastructure is going to, you know, can continue to degrade and need to be replaced. And so it's not funded through this type of approach, then it would need to be funded out of taxes. So it's, it's likely a tax increase could, could be needed at, at some point in the future. As I mentioned before, what we've determined is that by funding through a stormwater fee, it would actually save residents about 80% as opposed to paying through it for, for taxes. So this would definitely be a more cost-effective approach.
Yeah, I, I think the thing to articulate is that the city and other municipalities are already a taxing body that are taxing and paying through stormwater currently through taxes. So if you wanted to really look at the practicality of it, there, there already is a rain tax. I mean, you're paying through stormwater, infrastructure improvements, maintenance, MS4 through taxes. Looking at different avenues for funding through a fee structure actually reduces that burden on the taxpayer because fees are paid by all that use the service where taxes are only paid by a portion thereof. There's not, all the properties within the city are paying taxes, so they're getting, they're not paying their share for the stormwater infrastructure that the city is supporting. So from a taxpayer perspective, they're already paying a rain tax. Through a fee structure, you're going to, it's more equitable because that reduces the burden through the current taxpayers and spreads it to, to all the property owners that are using those services and, and benefiting from the stormwater infrastructure and flood control that's within the city that has historically been paid through, for taxes for years. So I think that's the, I guess, to the, the talking point of there's already a rain tax. That's how everything has been funded up until this point thus far through taxes.
And I think I asked this question the last time we were here, but if the city didn't, was not able to meet the permit requirements, at some point in the future, we would get fined for that and would have to pay a fine, I think a daily fine you said the last time, correct?
Yeah, so the department will, I mean, the obligations of the permits are steadfast, just like any other permit obligation. There's, the department can have a ham, a heavy hammer, they, if they really wanted to. Their statutory requirements, and I'm not an attorney, but I've been in this engineering business for a long enough time, the statute of requirements is $10,000 a day, can accumulate until you meet your permit requirements. Now, sometimes people say, well, we'll just pay the fee or the, the, the fine versus the infrastructure and that's, no, 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 it's $10,000 a day until you install or meet the permit requirements. So it's the, the cost to meet the permit requirements plus then the backlog of $10,000 a day for not, for not getting it. Now, does the department routinely, you know, go out to that extent? No, they would negotiate something in between. But at the end of the day, the department's not, DEP's not in the position or not in the business of, of trying to fine municipalities to make money. They're trying to get people to meet the regulatory requirements. Sometimes the only way to do that is to throw some fines, you know, it's the only way to get people to pay attention. You hit their wallet a little bit, they pay attention. So they use that basically as a negotiation tool to get people to meet the obligatory requirements. But ultimately, you know, just through the history, you know, they can issue a, a fines and have those, you know, up to $10,000 a day and then ultimately have to meet your permit requirements.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Phil, could I have a follow-up question?
Sure.
Nice to see Joe and Marty and Adrian and Mark. Thank you all for being here today. Larry, it's always good to see you. Adrian, you, you raised the issue of a regional stormwater authority and we're all familiar with regional sewer authorities or sanitary sewer authorities. We have locally, the Abington has one down the valley, there's a Wyoming Valley sanitary authority. Has there other, have there been other examples of stormwater authorities that you're familiar with in the state? Because I personally am not. Could you give us an example and, and how that works?
Sure. Like, so another example would be like Homing County Water and Sewer Authority. So historically, they've been providing water and sewer service.
But they're joint, right? They're stormwater and sanitary, correct?
Yes, yeah. Water, wastewater, stormwater. Yeah. There's other programs that are currently being implemented, like at the Dolphin County level. Now, that's, that's a program that's going to be done by, by the county municipalities can, can opt in, but the county would be providing stormwater services through a cost share formula from each of the municipalities.
And that would be a countywide stormwater management plan or management authority?
It's, it's designed to be for up to 40 municipalities that are in Dolphin County. It's an opt-in approach. So the thought is that their current MS4 regulated municipalities are likely going to participate at this time. And then as regulations continue to get tighter in future years, that some of the additional municipalities will continue to opt in over time then.
If you think of any other examples, because I know that, you know, the law department and I would have to look into how you have, would have a regional stormwater authority and how that would be funded and, and governed and all the rest. If you think of another example, if you could send that to me, I appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, we can, we can definitely provide those to you.
Yeah, throughout the country, there's many, many stormwater authorities, hundreds of stormwater authorities. In Pennsylvania, there's probably approaching 100 at this point as well. They're fairly new to the state. There was legislative action that taken, of course, a couple of years, a bunch of years ago that authorized it. So it's expanding as a new thing. Again, countrywide, it's pretty normal. Pennsylvania, it's somewhat new within the last seven, eight years, but it's growing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a quick question. So our forums are being run by, we don't know what the county's approach is at this point.
But for MSR compliance, we can start the process and all other municipalities can jump in at any time because at some point they have to comply or be in compliance. So is that where we are right now for the most part, basically? Now, have you presented to any other municipalities or just?
Do you have one?
Have you presented? I, I just think, they're saying they're reaching out to you. Have you, you've been here twice and presented and did a very great job.
Yep.
And have you done that at other municipalities trying to sell this like you've sold it to us?
So at the start of this feasibility study, we had a meeting where we invited all the municipalities to, to come and intend, the MS4 regulated municipalities. So the majority of them did come and then as a follow-up to them, we, to that, we had them provide survey responses back to us where we gauged their interest in this type of approach. And those survey responses are noted and included as part of the findings of, of the study. So we engaged them as, as part of that dialogue. We also engaged the county commissioners and, and talked to them about it a couple of times through the process. We have not re-engaged the municipalities now that the study is complete. That's one of the, the next steps that I think is really important is to get back in front of them and, and re, kind of re-engage them in this discussion, especially since they're starting to get some pressure from DEP for compliance.
Council McAndrew, to that point, I think, you know, it's been no secret, you know, Dixon City Borough has seen some significant issues up there as well. They have a concrete box culvert that they've had issues with in terms of flooding. There are other municipalities that have been, Old Forge is another one down along some road that, that have seen significant flooding. HRG, Senator Blake had actually engaged HRG and Eckert Siemens back in 2018 maybe? I'm not exactly sure when it was. They had come up into Scranton, we had engaged all the MS4 communities and there were 22 of them. We went to St. Mary's Center, put a presentation on, had an initial conversation. To go back to your point about the, about the rain tax, at that point, there was some, some articles that were published, some folks that were angry about, you know, the potential rain tax, so on and so forth. But I think over time, the fact that HRG has engaged other, other community members, not just Scranton, other communities, I think our local paper has done a pretty fair job reporting out that, you know, this is not just simply a, a tax issue, this is really, it's a stormwater issue. And that, that now we have the ability, the state legislature has given us the, the ability to, to engage from an authority standpoint, a way for us to, to help work, work out these problems that we have in terms of aging infrastructure and stormwater issues. So this concept that we have here locally, when I met with the MS4 statewide coordinator from DEP, I don't know, four or five years ago, at that point, he had indicated that northeastern Pennsylvania of the six regions in the state, we were by far the, the worst as in terms of meeting compliance in this space. So I don't think it's a secret that every time we try to do something a little more progressive, you know, we get a little bit of pushback. But I do think that right now, there have been so many incidents up here, we have so many municipalities that, that are really struggling to, to take on these issues that it is the right time to have these conversations. And, and going back to another comment, you know, I, I'm not so sure and I can't really gauge or speak for other municipalities, but in my short time here in the city, I, I could tell you that I have been out probably no less than a dozen times in, in less than four months on stormwater related issues throughout the city. It's obviously an issue throughout the neighborhood, throughout our neighborhoods. And I know that a couple of years back, we, the city had sold its stormwater and sanitary sewer assets to Pennsylvania American Water. I do plan at some point reaching out to Pennsylvania American Water. They, some of you may remember, they're in the middle of a $140 million sewer tank expansion project. I'm not sure if you, if you're familiar with it, but they, in order for them to meet stormwater compliant, they were, they were, this was back to city and the sewer authority, they were, they engaged in a $140 million 20-year plan to put those expansion tanks throughout the city. I think they've, they've completed somewhere around nine or 10 of them. Don't hold me to the number, but I know they've been working on them over the last five, seven years. But, but as part of it, as Pennsylvania American Water upgrades their systems and they separate their sanitary lines from, I'm sorry, yeah, their sanitary lines from the stormwater lines, those new stormwater lines have to come back to the city as a city asset. So the issues that we have today are only, you know, things we talk about are only really based on the assets that we currently have and responsible for that are solely stormwater lines. But eventually, as Pennsylvania American Water upgrades their infrastructure system, those, those stormwater lines will be turned back over to the city, they'll become our responsibility. So, you know, it's, it's one thing to talk about what we have today, which is serious enough, but we have, you know, not that I want to kick any cans down the road, but moving forward, the city will be taking on additional responsibility with some, with some additional lines at some point.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions?
Yeah, Adrian, last time you were here, you, you mentioned Luzerne County. Well, Luzerne County already has a stormwater authority, correct?
Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority is currently providing regional stormwater service to 32 of the municipalities in Luzerne County.
Okay.
They do sanitary as well, yes.
Okay, I know that was something you were talking about once we had our, our system up here formalized that we'd be working with them, is that correct?
There could be an opportunity to partner with entities like, like WVSA or other joint sewer authorities that exist in Lackawanna County.
Okay, but it's not, it's, it's slightly different than what we're looking to establish.
I would say the programming that's provided by WVSA would, is similar to what is being proposed here. There's, there's some nuances here. You know, for, for, an example would be, you know, Scranton has a levy system along with, you know, some of the adjacent municipalities. So levy maintenance and improvements is an example of something that's included conceptually in this program that isn't being done by WVSA.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one more, I'm sorry. I just want to go back to the 1700 block of Wyoming. Has there been, like, there was previous construction work done, right? I'm, I'm assuming that that has been done, whether it was the pipes. And did it cause any damage within the neighborhoods? And if so, who is responsible for that?
Are you asking about the project that was done to fix 1713, 1715?
Yes, the one that was, the previous work that's been done, that's, that didn't seem to work.
So if, if you're asking if there's been any, any additional damage, is that what you're asking?
What was, did it cause damage and, and who's responsible for it? I'm just asking. Or anybody identified as responsible for it?
So all I could tell you is, I mean, I've had some, some conversations with some of the local residents and it's just been recently pointed out to me that they're experiencing some additional problems with seepage or some, if, I don't, I don't want to say it's a water runoff, but there was, obviously there's some issues with water seeping into their basements that they didn't have before. That's relatively new to me. I did, I just found that out in the last week or two, talking to some of the residents there. I, I don't know what we could do at this point. I mean, I know, I know it seems like everything seems to be piling up in the 1700 block of Wyoming here. But at the end of the day, I will stay in touch with the, the folks up there to see if there's something we can do to help them immediate. I'm not sure, I'm not an engineer, but I'm certain we could get our engineer to go take a look at the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I could just close out, I just want to say thank you to both HRG and two of our associates for coming out tonight. I really appreciate your efforts and your, and your support here. So if counsel has anything else?
No, I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and giving us an update. We will, it's now 6:09, we'll have a caucus out here at the table and then our regular meeting will start at 6:30. Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to call this public meeting order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Let us also take a moment of silence for all of the people in our community and our country and around the world who have passed away and been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. This pandemic has turned our world upside down, but we must remain hopeful and strong. We continue to pray for the doctors, nurses and researchers and all medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Whether we are here at home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together and in place of our anxiety, let us have hope and peace.
Roll call, please.
President?
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Dr. Rothschild here. Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Goine?
Councilman Schuster?
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table file of council number 78 of 2021.
So motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of the council number 78, 2021. This piece is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. This ordinance is the capital budget for 2022. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A. Correspondence received from the Department of Licensing, Inspections and Permits dated September 20th, 2021. 3B. Minutes of the Shade Tree Commission meeting held April 20th, 2021. 3C. Memorandum from Kevin C. Hayes Esquire dated September 14th, 2021 regarding process for amending, adopting the Home Rule Charter. 3D. Overtime review for all departments as provided by City Control are dated September 21st, 2021 for the period January to September, 2021. 3E. Agenda for the zoning hearing board, public hearing to be held on Monday, October 4th, 2021.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I do. Next week, there's going to be a couple medication take-back events. These events are to dispose of unused expired medications properly. What they accept is prescription medications, over-the-counter medications, pain relieving acid, cold medications, laxatives, eye drops, dietary supplements, vitamins, herbal supplements, topical medication, creams, ointments and pet medication, no needles, inhalers or liquid medications. These events are going to occur next week, Monday, October, October 4th at the Prescription Center on 329 Cherry Street in Scranton. And then October, I'm sorry, October 2nd is, is the first one. That's at the medicine shop at 2239 Pittston Avenue in Scranton from 9:30 to 12:30. And if you can't make either of them, Taylor will have it on, the Taylor Community Library on 710 South Main Avenue, Street and Taylor. On Saturday, September 23rd from 9 to 12:30 PM. That's all I have, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Yes, I'd like to announce two events coming up. Both of them are great for families, but this Saturday, October 2, at Naug Park, the Greenhouse Project, they'll be bringing together a bee costume parade, and I'll be followed by their Harvest Day. And so you can dress up or dress your children up as bees, and they'll be walking from the treehouse to the greenhouse. And I think they'll also be passing by Geisinger to thank our central workers or worker bees. And that will be starting at 12 PM. And then there'll be music, food, games, and just a lot of fun. So you can join the greenhouse at Naug Park on Saturday if you're interested in that. And then a couple Saturdays from now, on October 16, our Parks and Rec Department is going to be hosting a, I'm sorry, Arts in the Park event that's going to take place at 11 o'clock, 11 AM, October 16, at Robinson Park. And kids will have the chance to make different Halloween arts and crafts. So if you're interested in that, you can go to the Scranton Parks and Rec Facebook page and sign up there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have one announcement tonight. Dr. Matthew Meyer, a member of the Ethics Board, recently resigned his position, as I mentioned last week. City Council is accepting letters of interest and resumes for the open seat, which was announced last Tuesday. The deadline is tomorrow, Wednesday, September 29, at 4 PM. You may email our city clerk, Frank Voldenberg, at F-Volden-Berg, that's F-V-O-L-D-E-N-B-E-R-G, at ScrantonPA.gov with your letter of interest and your resume. This is a very important board in the city. They are actually very busy, if you look at their minutes from the past few months. So there are a lot of things going on there. So we do need someone who would be committed to being on the board. So if you're interested in public service and you're interested in service to the city, please let us know and put in your letter of interest and resume. Mr. Voldenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. The first speaker tonight is Joan Hodowanitz.
Today is September 28. Do you know where your 2020 audit is?
Still in process. We haven't got a final, no, we haven't gotten a final date unless Councilman Donahue...
I know the auditors were in the building today, just working on their final audits.
Okay. Second verse, same as the first. Next. "I'm happy to say we're making progress on the city's website. Two more documents relating to the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement were posted. Here is a current list of documents relating to the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement. A basic agreement for the period January 1, 1996 through December 31, 2002, signed by Mayor Connors on June 6, 1998. A memorandum of understanding detailing amendments to the agreement for the period 2008 through 2017, signed by Mayor Courtright on January 30, 2015. However, I've not seen any document covering the period January 1, 2003 through December 31, 2007. A memorandum of understanding detailing amendments to the agreement for the period January 1, 2008 through December 31, 2021, signed by Mayor Courtright on November 27, 2018. Now, when I buy a book that's in its fifth or sixth edition, I don't buy the first edition and then five revisions as separate documents. I buy one book, and it contains all revisions. I expect that the best way to handle these revised agreements is to print one document which contains all the amendments and revisions. To me, that would support transparency and disclosure. So while we are making progress, hopefully we'll get the entire story before the end of the year. Otherwise, you're going to have a problem when this legislation comes up. Next, with regard to a Times Tribune article yesterday on the Pocket Park, you might want to take a look at Item 3B, the Shade Tree Commission's April minutes. They recommended placing a memorial for first responders, essential workers, in this park rather than on Courthouse Square. According to the newspaper, there are plans for a monument in the park, but no monument has yet been identified. So I think you should give serious consideration to the Shade Commission's recommendation. Next, with regard to the latest review of overtime expenditures. The report covers a nine-month period through the end of September, and several departments have exceeded their overtime budgets by a significant margin, including Lips, 389%, DPW Admin, 546%, and DPW Engineering, 464%. I've ignored Police and Fire because they might be getting reimbursements, but I suggest that when the proposed 2022 operating budget comes forward, you take a hard look at overtime projections in that budget. They may not be realistic. And finally, do you have any dates for public caucuses on the Sorenti Center's past and future funding, OECD's recap on its loan and grant programs, and the caucus with the mayor and her department heads? And I will listen for your answers in fifth order. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I can actually answer you right now, really quick.
Okay.
On the Sorenti Center, we received a report of all of the activity that's gone on up there. We'll put that in third order. We just, I just received that today. And then we are in the process, I think Frank is meeting with the Chief of Police this Thursday to talk about a caucus date and information there. So that's number one. What was your second?
OECD capping its loans and grants.
Yes, we received a response from Eileen Cipriani. That'll be in third order as well, with details to all the questions that we ask on the grants.
And the mayor and her department heads?
We did not receive a response yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jack White.
Good evening. I hope all your families and friends are well and safe, and everybody else that you love and they love you back are safe and well. Back to fogging up, right? I've noticed, oh, I'm sorry, Jack White, 500 Wheeler, Block Wheeler. I've noticed recently that the landfill trucks aren't barreling down Wheeler Ave or back, and they're not dropping all that nasty leachate, shite. And it's good to see. And the utility companies are keeping, helped by the rain, of course, but keeping the dust down, which is also nice to see. So the neighbors are wondering why that happened, and my hunch is there's some behind-the-scenes going on with council and the other powers that be. So thank you if you're involved. I was, I get damn tense a lot. I'm sure I mentioned that. I have safety concerns on Harris, Lackawanna, and Wyoming, as the cars are coming, entering onto Lackawanna from Wyoming. The green walk sign, I think it's supposed to be about 20 seconds or 18 seconds or something like that. It turns out that the green light walking person is on for 18 or 20 seconds, but in seven seconds, the light turns green coming from Wyoming Avenue entering onto Lackawanna. It's an accident waiting to happen. Slow people, older people, wheelchair people get seven seconds. I mean, if you step off the curb, it takes about seven seconds to walk across Lackawanna. I've seen it happen. I've seen brakes screech. I've seen people take a deep breath and panic. So that's going on. I hope something, again, public safety, and I hope nothing happens to anybody. But along these same lines, safety, I don't know who designed the intersection coming off of the, well, where Jefferson meets at the University of Scranton, coming off, is it the bypass, the freeway, expressway? Coming off the expressway, going into Jefferson, going straight into Linden. No one, no older person, person in a wheelchair, even a younger person, is in danger at that intersection. There is no handicap crossing. The traffic lights are crazy. There is no single time that all traffic is stopped. There is no little green man there. And everything is a curb. Everything is a curb. Again, I think it was designed, I don't know how long ago, but the engineer, whoever, whomever, didn't have public safety in mind. It's pretty. It's a nice piece of architecture, if you will, road architecture. It's very nice. I could, you know, if you're looking from a sky view, it's pretty, and it's well done. It's too well done. I don't think it's, I mean, it's dangerous, but it's more frustrating. Students are there all the time. They're hopping and skipping across to come downtown. I think we lose a lot of Lackawanna Avenue traffic because of that, from the students. And again, it's just unfortunate. I would hope somebody, I'm very sorry about that. I'm not used to these kinds of things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next speaker is Lee Morgan. And Mr. Voldenberg, if you can just take Mr. White's concerns and get them to the police department, please. Thank you.
I will, Mr. Gahan.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Good evening, council. Lee Morgan. I didn't forget about the request for council to put the Home Rule Charter on the ballot. I mean, it seemed to get lost somewhere before the pandemic actually struck, but tonight I wanted to come and talk about Doherty Hayes and the litigation that's starting to form against naming the Central Scranton Expressway and Spruce Street after President Biden. And I'd like to ask this council, or you, Mr. Gahan, as council president, to talk to the mayor and withdraw naming anything after President Biden. And you can shake your head no, but it just goes to prove one very special thing. If the American people are watching the hearings that are taking place in the Congress and the Senate, even Democratic congressmen and senators are calling this president a liar. All right? Not Republicans, but Democrats and Republicans, okay, over the withdrawal from Afghanistan and that he's a liar. This president is a liar. He's, he's just, he's got people getting killed on the ground, okay, former allies in Afghanistan, abandoned our allies in Europe. It's just a, it's just a running and continual, just a lack of respect for the American people all the way around. Coming to a podium, not answering one thing and walking away. And now they're complaining that the press isn't asking him the right questions, and now we find out that the Hunter Biden laptop was real and the President of the United States was taking money from foreign governments. And we're naming streets after this man. Now, in certain countries, in Afghanistan, okay, if you're homosexual, they kill you just, and that's the India. Okay? I mean, if you work with the Americans, they just kill you. They cut your head off or they do whatever and they kill you. He's abandoned everybody. And everything he said, whether it has to do with the border, even COVID, I mean, you stood up here and talked about COVID. Well, now they're finding out that all the things that went on during the Trump administration in regards to, the things they said were plain silliness on Trump's part in regards to the virus turn out to be absolutely true, that Obama and Biden, Trufucci, funded the COVID research in China. And this council wants to name a street after a man who doesn't even know where he is and who comes to the podium as president, and they say, well, he says to the American people, I shouldn't be talking about this. Or he takes scripted questions off of reporters, so he'd go one, two, three, four, five, right down the line. I mean, is that somebody we should name a street after? Really? Think about that. I mean, it's the most troubling thing. It just smacks only of politics. It really does. And you know something? If you have respect for the American people, I can't understand how anybody could even name anything after this man. Now, I do understand that the mayor worked with the Obama administration and the Biden administration in Washington before she came here as mayor. But it's all politics, and the Scrantonians deserve better than that. And there's just no way for this council to defend this president and to force the residents of the city of Scranton to endure his name on anything. If anything should happen here, you should put this on the ballot and let the residents of the city of Scranton decide whether they want his name on something or they don't. But since you can sit at this council, you can try to force it down the residents' throats that they're going to accept it because it's political and you said. But that's not American, okay? I think that the Scrantonians have a right to self-determination on deciding what they want. The same thing with the Home Rule Charter. The people in this city are not servants to you. You are their servant, and you've forgotten that.
Thank you for the lesson in foreign policy and science, Mr. Morgan. Next speaker is Ron Elman.
You guys can't see my pretty face with this mask on. Counsel, three, four people have asked me why I haven't been coming to meetings. It's simply because I'm so very disgusted and repulsed that a half dozen city employees have been allowed to dictate their personal agenda over the wishes of the majority, this undeserving street scenario that we're going through. We have TV pictures of tens of thousands of illegals, uneducated, unvaccinated, and so forth. You know all that. The worst that the third world has to offer, infesting our shores. This is, this is terrible for our future. These are our future citizens. You know, they have already abolished America as we know it. You see that when you ask if you want English anymore or Spanish. If these people want to make America like where they came from, it doesn't make sense... If these people want to make America like where they came from, it doesn't make sense to me. I've talked to so many people. Scranton is just worse than it was a year ago because of this administration's coming down on us with everything and pathetic excuse for a governor that just won't use good judgment anymore. These people have changed it for the worse, you know? Just a walking distance of this building, I've talked to some people last month or two, that they don't flush a toilet, they don't cook, they've been using microwaves, doing everything they can to save up for winter heat money. This shouldn't be. And there's not more, I'm talking about, I've talked to not like a single person, I've talked to several people that are just, there's no way they're going to make it in the wintertime, you know, without help. On television the other day, it showed Biden's busload of people getting off and having a buffet dinner. How many people out there have buffet three times a week? How many get free transportation across the country to go see other illegals? They have infested our schools. We have to have interpreters, the hospitals. I I tried to find out, my son's computer, how many, how many illegals are in beds because of COVID? Nobody would tell you. And there's, there's got to be a figure. You know, I know all of you have seen on television ads pleading for donations for veterans. This shouldn't be. A veteran should never be in need of anything, especially some that they show you that have been injured so severely, they and their families. And look what is being spent on illegals. Money that should go to people in this country is is gone. I'll tell you, this, this is the man that you guys want to honor. He doesn't deserve it at this time, you know? I know you won't like it, but Joe Biden is no more than a successful failure. He is not my president. Thank you for allowing me to finish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. In my neighborhood, and it'd be nice to get it out before somebody gets a citation on it, somebody's adopting some fire pits and they're kind of close to the houses. I couldn't lay out full length of me between my house and the next house on one side. And I don't think they realize the implications of a fire in the neighborhood. Usually we lose two other houses at best if one starts. So would it be interesting to try and get word around, you know, be careful with fire? I'll have to deal with it in my own way. For Joe Biden, it just gets, he, he won the election and that's it. I didn't feel he was right in criticizing the Afghan troops because the thieves that we put in the power in the government of Afghanistan, and they were, a few were elected, stole a lot of money. It was like $165 million. Followed President Ghosnzy, so, you know, I didn't really think the Spruce Street was the greatest idea. I thought the expressway was okay, but, and that's the way it is. Once again, COVID, the southern people, our southern citizens are pretty good at spreading COVID all by themselves. They don't believe in vaccinations. They want to rebel against the vaccinations. And many of the hospitals down south are in crisis care. That means that a doctor assesses your condition at the emergency room. And if he doesn't regard you, or she, as viable for survival, you get given comfort care. And if you make it, great. If you don't make it, oh, well, time to go to the hereafter, whatever that is. I was always a doubting Thomas, haven't been to church in 49 years, so, you know? And once again, on voting, last week I mentioned that the Republicans are trying to confiscate or subpoena your name, your address, your part of your social security number, your driver's license number, all over their imagined fraud. And if you're out there watching in TV land, they plan to pass a constitutional amendment for the Pennsylvania constitution. My advice is vote no, because they always want to override the governor. They got it with the emergency declaration. So now we get to sit while there's a pandemic and while they argue and peddle back and forth in this state. And if possible, some of you people were on the school board. Are we? I read about a lawsuit over certain school districts. And I lost the article. I think I can dig it up for further explanation. But are, are, is Scranton any part of that? There were half a dozen school districts mentioned and nobody else. This is serious with this town, too. We're being short of $40 million a year. And just like Pell, we got somebody to give us lots of advice and no money. Are we part of that? Can anybody answer that?
No, Scranton is not part of that.
We're not?
No.
It's a shame we aren't. And we really deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. That exhausts the sign-in sheet. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Yes, Marie Schumacherwood. Since Council President Bill Gahn refuses to have emails and letters sent into council read aloud for all viewers to hear, I have been asked by Fay Ferranis to ask her question. Fay Ferranis wants to know the answer to this question. Has counsel considered researching how many firemen may be retiring in the next three years to cover the cost of the 10 firemen whose pay will end when the save, when the safer grant expires in three years? This seems to be the only solution to this situation as how to continue paying for these 10 firemen. I need an answer. Thank you.
The grant would, the grant would not be covered.
I'm sorry.
The grant could not cover that scenario where you're just replacing retired firefighters.
Well, I know, but have you guys looked at how, how many people are going to be retiring in the next three years or are eligible to see if it's 20 people?
But you, but to, to accept the grant, you still have to stay at that level. So if we're at 144 now and we add 10, even if 10 retire, we still have to stay at 154. We can't be at 144.
Okay. So, okay. Personally, I believe the driver should be the efficiency of the current workforce and do we really need more firefighters? Now, on to mine. As, as by code, you have until the 15th of December to act on the capital budget. And I ask that you table the capital budget until 14 December or the administration points, puts a lot more meat on the bones of the current version, whichever comes first. For example, the request of 2022 Parks and Recreation Budget is $1,525,000. But how will this be spent? The narrative provided says only, "The results of the McLean and Associates study will be used to determine needs and prioritization of projects." That is not complying with the requirements. The, the McLean contract runs through 2024. So when will we see this study? Will the lookout be funded in 2022? That is quite a historical first place. Next, next year I'll bring, or next week I'll bring you something on the WPA because you're all too young to know what that was. But they built it and it's going down fast. So how do we know? It needs help now. What is the funding split between the ARPA and the general budget? What is the general budget for that matter? Is it the operating budget? Lots more questions, but time is short. So let me just say, overall, I don't believe this submittal, that being the capital budget, gets a passing grade. ARPA will be putting almost $70 million into our coffers, 50% or $35 million in year one, and is being used to fund about 40% of the capital budget. I'll leave it up to you to calculate the dollar percent that mine was on the line items. But further, why are we advertising also for proposals for a grant requirements, accounting, compliance, and evaluation services for the AARP? Is there nothing that this city can't do in-house? Does everything have to be put out for bid? It is imperative that before dollar one is spent there, if the agreement between the mayor and council can have on this $35 million windfall will be allocated. I don't, I don't worry that you and your grandchildren and children will repay this windfall with interest. I am providing this Treasury Department recommended guiding principles for your office. And can you tell me what, how much Portnoy has collected since they have been put under contract to collect the two-year delinquencies?
I don't have those figures tonight, but we can certainly get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Coyne, Oak Avenue, Manuka. I would like to request that this body consider by paragraph Resolution 7C. Though it has been stated this way in prior documents, I'm requesting a correction moving forward. I am addressing the fourth paragraph stating, whereas pursuant to the election of option, the city elected to keep the current tipping fee of $43.25 per ton for the disposal of the city municipal waste for the remainder life of the landfill, which was understood to be 30 years. This should be amended. The statement reflects which was understood to be 30 years. The correct and codified language states the expected life of 30 years or the life of the landfill. This statement should be moved and inserted after election of option, struck and struck from the end. As it stands, the statement can be construed as to be used if the other party chooses to be litigious, as a statement that it was intended only to be enforced, enforceable for 30 years. The original document reflected an expected life of 30 years for the landfill, but understood possible expansion and built in the term for the life of the landfill to reflect that. To not reflect that codified agreement in those terms may cause future issues. It is also necessary to not impact the following section for the $100,000 a year donation by, by suggesting it was understood to be for 30 years. It was clear that it was expected to be enforced for the expected life of 30 years or the life of the landfill, whatever was greater. Now on to ordinance aid, the, for these strips. Though a noble idea, it is illegal and lawful to adopt. Similar to medical use of marijuana, it was illegal by federal standards, but the states, through mandate or decriminalization, could order a request that it not be reforced, instruct the officers to use discretion as the broad intent of paraphernalia was not intended to prevent life-saving measures. But until the state elects to decriminalize the use, the only tool available in this city's, is the city's executive branch requesting that the chief of police use broad discretion on this issue. I would also like to inquire if Dr. Rothschild has received a response about a request to the number of calls and citations for the Fourth of July fireworks that she had requested. Also, as if she has received a reply about changing the wording of the depart, of the police departments noticed from the less aggressive and de-escalating terms in relation to the Civil Disturbance Unit being considered for renaming to the Civil Intervention Unit and the Police Wireless Surveillance System to the Police Wireless Public Safety System. I would also request that memorandum 3C be replied to in fifth order from all council members, rather than the public being required to garner 5% of signatures. Would counsel forward an ordinance allowing for the population to vote on the matter at large? If they would like to have government, a government study commissioned, impaneled. Last, you asked for a report on the city employees vaccination rate and mandates. Have you had a response from the mayor's office?
Thank you. I will take your order in fifth order.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers tonight? Mr. Volenberg?
Fifth order, 5A, motions.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes, I have two comments. First off, last year in the, in the budget process, council put a line item in for the community centers. I spoke to Mr. Dealey back in February about getting this money allocated to the community centers, and he assured me that it would occur. It's been quite some time since then. And recently, last week, I reached out to Mrs. McMullin. I sent her an email, and I haven't heard anything back yet, whether these funds would be dispersed to the community centers. So, Mr. Volenberg, can we send a communication to the proper, proper administration to see when these funds could be allocated to the community centers?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
And then second, I, I've got some calls in the last few days from the Bellevue section of Scranton. I'm, I'm sure Mr. McCandrick will be bringing it up soon, too, because I know he got some of the same calls. The city passed an ordinance in, in 1993, and the proper signage is from Lackawanna Avenue to Fourth, to Broadway in that area in Bellevue. I, I think we need to send letters of correspondence to the administration and the police department to see if we can get the enforcement of the 10,000-pound restrictions in these areas. And I've also gotten some pictures today of some of the tractor trailers driving in that area currently. So if we could send a correspondence to, also to police department and administration about the enforcement of the 10,000-ton, or 10,000 weight limit in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCandrick, any motions or comments tonight?
Actually, it's, it's the same as Mr. Schuster, but I can expand a little bit. So yesterday, Andy Chompco, he's from the West Scranton Neighborhood Association, reached out to me. He had concerns and complaints from residents of the Bellevue section. And the complaints are about large And the complaints are about large trucks. And they're not the salt trucks that, that's always, that's still the big problem on East Elm because of the bridge situation. You know, they're dealing with that, which is, which is terrible too, but they understand that. These trucks are tri轴s, they're big trucks that are driving up and down Railroad Avenue, Luzerne Street. And no one knows why. I mean, the ordinance that you speak of is right here. I have it. It's nineteen ninety-five. And this ordinance was written, was written for Bellevue. It says prohibiting truck traffic having a registered gross weight of ten tons or more on the three streets I just mentioned, namely Seventh Avenue at its intersection with Lackawanna and its intersection with Railroad. And from the intersection with Seventh Avenue to the intersection with Fourth Avenue, Broadway Street from its intersection with Railroad Avenue, to the west end of the bridge over the Lackawanna River, which being East Elm, which you can't even cross now with these trucks. So because the salt trucks have to go somewhere else. But once again, these aren't the salt trucks. And signs are posted, you know, these signs are posted since the, you know, the ordinance was, was introduced. And it's, and they're on Railroad Avenue. They're on the bridge near West Elm. There, there's one Broadway in South Washington. There's one in Meridian. And there's one on the corner of Railroad and Luzerne, Seventh and Lackawanna. And these are all, all four entrances into the Bellevue section of Scranton. So these signs are clearly posted. You know, this ordinance is, is, you know, being broken. So I also request that please send some correspondence to the mayor and the police department to remind them that, you know, there's an ordinance in place and this, there's a situation that's occurring because, and some of the residents are concerned that, you know, because there's a lot of mines, mines under, you know, underneath most of Bellevue and that their houses are being shaken by these big trucks and hence maybe causing some of the water main breaks down there. So please send this correspondence. Thank you.
I'll take care of it, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. First, just to respond to Mr. Coyne's questions regarding responses I requested from the Scranton Police Department. I had back in July received a response about the Fourth of July fireworks. And they'd said that there were, that they had responded to a hundred and five calls regarding the fireworks, but that no citations were issued. And I have not received any responses regarding my request last week in reference to the Civil Disturbance Unit. And next thing I wanted to bring up, just to update people on, OECD has put together a Quality of Life Task Force Committee. And they had met last week. Councilmembers Schuster and McCandrick had both been able to attend that. I was not able to do my work schedule, but we did receive minutes and, and updates from them on that. And they'll be meeting again, but looks like they, they have a good amount of people on that task force to bring a number of concerns on the quality of life tickets and how to make it a more effective process. And just what we can do to, to fix that aspect of, of lips and how they operate. And there will be, I expect that there will be some ordinances that will come to our desk that will also be able to take action on to, to help with that situation. And then lastly, I did receive an email with a complaint about Vine Street. And I know we've had complaints about this in the past. This person was complaining about the intersections of Quincy, Clay, and Webster at Vine Street. I believe we had sent something in the past. It might have been about Clay. And I know there was an, an accident there this year involving a pedestrian. But this person was complaining about the vehicles being too close to the intersections where they are parking and oftentimes parking or blocking into the crosswalks and that they hadn't noticed any tissues being, being issued. And so if we could contact SPD and ask them to complete a traffic study at those intersections and to determine what we need to do to make them safer for pedestrians and drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mc, or Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you.
I have a few comments tonight. One of the issues that was brought to my attention in North Scranton regarding the eighteen hundred block of Ferdinand Street, there's really bad problems with water runoff and it's especially troublesome in the winter. People have lost time at work due to the, being stuck in their driveways. Mr. Priambo, the DPW director, did get back to me. There is a Pima project in development for repair of the issues up there. And the design is currently underway with Labello Associates. So want to thank him for that. We've requested information on a number of different items and, and Mr. Volenberg provided me a status report late this afternoon. In regards to the Green Ridge Plaza road markings, the DPW director advised NAI Summit Realty, the plaza owner, to repair those. It's their responsibility to repair the road markings. They're apparently, according to their investigation, and there has been no response to date. As I mentioned to Ms. Hodowanitz earlier this evening, the Sorenti Center, there were several questions regarding that. Council did receive an update from the administration. We will put that in third order for next week. And then we'll, we are in the process of scheduling a caucus to get an update, a further update and for them to present that information. So we'll continue to update everyone. Also, in regards to one of the agenda items tonight, the DPW director did respond that in terms of the Keystone Sanitary Landfill, the money that we get, not the money, but the equipment, in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars that we get from them every year, if you take, if you subtract all of the money that's been spent so far, we have a remaining balance of thirty-three thousand ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents from the two thousand twenty donation. No money has been spent on the two thousand twenty-one donation program as of late. As I mentioned in the caucus, we did receive a proposal on the fixing the sound system in council chambers. So we'll deliberate amongst our, well, everyone will take a look at the proposal and then we'll try to chart a path forward there. We received information from the OECD director regarding questions posed last week. So we'll put that in third order. And then in terms of the caucuses with the department heads, we're still waiting on a response from the administration. I did speak briefly with the mayor and she did tell me that she's going to respond to my, my questions on my call last week for the city to take, I think, a more aggressive stance on the vaccination, vaccination status of our employees. As I mentioned last week, back at the end of July, I had requested information from the mayor regarding the vaccination status of our city employees. After we sent, council sent the letter, the administration and the mayor said that they were considering requiring any employee who chooses not to submit a proof of vaccination to get tested on a regular basis. So I had inquired if that in fact ever happened. It's my belief that we, the city needs to, if they can, mandate the vaccine for all city employees. Fire, police, DPW, clerical, anyone that works for the city of Scranton should have their vaccine. If they don't, they should face termination or whether or not the mayor, they're going to do regular testing, I don't know. But I did ask whether or not that's within the law. The administration and the mayor apparently are looking into that. And we're expecting an answer by next week. Also, an update on the status of disability pensions. Mr. Volenberg, in the process, as people who have been following council for the last few years know, we did have very severe issues with disability pensions within the police and fire department. And there were efforts made to curb that. I would like an update on how that process is going and request a list also of how many employees are out on compensation and disability. And we, we made that request already to the HR director, but have not heard back. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Volenberg?
Five B, for introduction and ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the southerly side of Birch Street, State Route three zero two three, beginning approximately eighty feet west of its intersection with Cedar Avenue for a distance of ninety-five feet to allow for safe sight distance for a proposed driveway for the Dollar General store being constructed and located at eight hundred Cedar Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five C, for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Barbara O'Malley, six thirty-eight Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight five one zero, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority, effective September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. O'Malley will be replacing Timothy Woody, who resigned August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. O'Malley will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Woody, which is scheduled to expire August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd like to welcome Ms. O'Malley and also thank Mr. Tim Woody for his service to the city.
On the question, I would also like to add that Ms. O'Malley, she's been a fantastic volunteer for Naog Park. And I think that she will be a great addition to Recreation Authority Board. She's, she's very committed and I know wants to, wants to see the Naog Park look in the its best.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, reading by title, file the council number eighty-five, two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled Public Health Coordination for the receipt of and dispersment of grant monies from the Moses Taylor Foundation for payment of the new public health coordinator position for the city of Scranton.
You've heard reading by title of item six A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item six A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution number two twenty, two thousand twenty-one, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Scranton Cultural Center at the Masonic Temple to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the project to be known as Building Preservation and Safety, located at four twenty North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution number two twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, accepting an anonymous donation in the amount of one hundred dollars to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in the special city account, as noted, SFD donation account.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution number two twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the acceptance by the city of Scranton by Keystone Sanitary Landfill of a two thousand twenty-one Valley Tool thirty EXS HD brush mower attachment per Sourcewell contract, as noted, BAI from Five Star Equipment.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question? On the question, Mr. Hayes, can you just address the issues that were brought up tonight by Mr. Coyne?
Sure. Resolution number two 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 of two thousand twenty-one does not in any way amend any agreement between the city of Scranton and Keystone Sanitary Landfill. The agreements that control that include the waste disposal agreement, the settlement agreement, and other amendments and agreements between the parties. All this resolution is doing is authorizing the acceptance of equipment that was contemplated in a election or an option provision in the settlement agreement. So I understand his concerns, but to be certain, this, this resolution is not in any way modifying those agreements. Those agreements are controlling and I don't think that it's an issue at all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, so this, this is being expended out of a two thousand twenty donation, which still has a remaining balance of thirty-three thousand ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents. And there's been zero money allocated so far out of the two thousand twenty-one donation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number two twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one, as amended. Reappointment of David E. Falcheck, seventeen oh five Church Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight five oh eight, as a member of the Board of Ethics, effective September first, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Falcheck will be appointed to a three-year term scheduled to expire on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D as amended.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven D as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven E, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number seventy-eight, two thousand twenty-one, approving and accepting the city of Scranton capital budget for the year two thousand twenty-two pursuant to section nine oh four of the city's Home Rule Charter.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven E.
Second.
On the question? On the question, this capital budget is simply, it's a wish list for the city on what we, what projects the city may want to try to fund in the future, what things that we want to try to accomplish here, whether it's taking care of City Hall and the improvements that need to be made here, whether it's with the park system, equipment at the DPW. In terms of the, the question that Ms. Schumacher raised on the park study, that still is in development. It's still in process. But that will be done relatively soon. And it is going to be very, very beneficial to the city of Scranton to have a comprehensive park study completed. And I have all the faith in the world in Tom McLean and his associates to get that done. They've done great work for the city. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven E legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, old business, eight A, for introduction and ordinance implementing policy regarding the possession and/or distribution of fentanyl test strips for harm reduction purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Volenberg. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a good night.